Highly unusual and very high in review, go on a list. List is typically less than 2,000 locations. Seven of those locations are on this one mile strip of Route 82. About 40% of the total crashes that we've reviewed along Route 82 are at the driveways. So they're not all occurring at signalized intersections. A lot of it's at the driveways, and that's what we're going to look at soon here. So looking at Route 82, this falls into typical transportation access management type concepts. Looking at all these yellow circles, these are all driveways. Most of them commercial driveways, uncontrolled, no traffic signal. You've got a four lane section of Route 82 in most places. In some cases, it's five lanes. And left turns coming out of the driveways and into the driveways. When you're making a left turn out, you need a gap in both directions on the roadway you're crossing, and you need a gap in the lane you're going into. What happens when roadways are busy, people looking for a gap, they tend to make quick maneuvers, sometimes aggressive maneuvers. Sometimes they misjudge gaps because they got impatient in waiting, and they end up in a crash. These are the locations on our surveillance study list. They're high crash locations. Just go through them quickly. And the low numbers are the highest in the crash ratings. As the number gets higher, it's less crashes. So between Burger King and Mobile Driveway, a very high crash location. Route 82 at New London Turnpike, that's the intersection. Again, very, very high crash location. The Bank Driveway, Eastern Bank, 328, identified as a very, very high crash location. 114, Bank of America, on a list with less than 2,000 locations. That's pretty, pretty high on the list. Between Extramar and Dunkin' Donuts, Sitco to Willow Street Plaza here, and then Route 82 at Asylum and Mechanic Street, a little lower on the list. Typically, what happens, this is just one place along Route 82 we picked out for an example to describe the typical crash patterns that are occurring. You have a driveway. Somebody wants to get out of the driveway. You've got four lanes of traffic. This particular location has had 19 crashes in a four-year period that we studied. Someone wants to pull out, make a left. You've got to have a gap in both lanes of traffic here, plus a gap in the lane you're going to. It's like a gap in three lanes of traffic to be able to make your left turn maneuver out. And same thing if you want to make a left in. And when congestion is high, people sit there, they become impatient, and they tend to take short gaps, and they make risky maneuvers. Sometimes end up involved in a crash and a statistic here. So safety, part of the reason we're here, a big part of the reason. Intersections, again, same thing. We're reviewing a lot of crashes. What we're seeing at the intersections for crashes, I have to move just a little closer Looking at a lot of rear-end crashes. This is Route 82 at New London Turnpike. Seventeen crashes in four years, rear ends, in this location. Eleven in the other direction. Eight, New London Turnpike here. And nine in the other direction. Also, a number of side swipes, angle-type crashes. Total, in four years, this location had 66 crashes in a four-year period with 10 injuries. And this is just one intersection on the entire corridor, just to give you an idea of what's happening and the severity. Here's a scenario of an operation problem. Route 82 westbound. Can see the white car here, heading westbound. It's coming up on this intersection. You've got, the signal is green. This car wants to make a left, approaching the intersection. It's coming up on Old Times, he's still got the green light. He wants to make a left. He's got other cars in the opposing direction, three or four sitting here, they want to make a left into this plaza. This car, he's over the center line, trying to make his left. He's over the center line because he can't see oncoming traffic. Typically, when you have left turn lanes at an intersection opposing, you know, the cars making left would be looking at each other. But when you have two through lanes, they're offset, this person that wants to make a left can't see through these cars to see oncoming traffic. So he's offset, he's here, he's waiting, he's trying to judge if somebody's coming or not, but he can't see very well. Meanwhile, these guys are waiting for a gap, they're just sitting there waiting. So that car, he executes his turn, he's up here now. This is looking the eastbound direction. These cars are still here, they're waiting, can't make their left turn. Looking eastbound again, signals here, it's still green, they're still waiting. Now the light's red. They've got to sit through a whole nother cycle of the light before they can make their left turn. So it's congestion, idling. These types of situations contribute to people making risky maneuvers and contribute to the crashes that we're seeing on Route 82. Back in 2005, DOT worked with the city, and there was a concept discussed then. The concept was kind of a common theme, well, trying to deal with left-turning vehicles. One way to deal with it is to put in a two-way left turn lane along the corridor, and that allows room for vehicles to escape the through traffic and wait their turn, wait their gap, to be able to make a left into the driveways. It's very expensive, it involves a lot of widening. At today's prices, probably $34 million. But it doesn't address the safety. It really doesn't. Here's a graphic of what that would have looked like. You've got two through lanes in each direction, left turn lane in the middle, and you have a vehicle sitting here waiting to make a left into the driveways. He's still crossing two lanes of traffic to get into the driveways, and a vehicle that wants to go out of the driveway and make a left, he's got to cross two lanes, plus get through the two-way left turn lane, plus he's got to have a gap in the other direction to make his left. So with the number of driveways on this Route 82 corridor, that two-way left turn lane was really not found to have enough benefit to justify the cost as far as safety. What you really need is access management. You start looking at access management on a corridor, it comes to medians. This is a project we did on Route 83 in Vernon, but I'm just going to use a small portion of this as an example. This section was previously uncontrolled access. The Friendly's here, McDonald's, Dunkin' Donuts, and a gas station. All came out onto the four-lane roadway with these driveways. Numerous accidents, very similar to Route 82. And just looking at one location, we put the median in, you can't make a left in the driveway, and you can't make a left out. And that stops people crossing multiple lanes of traffic, making risky maneuvers. On Route 82, conceptually, we've laid this out to show what that median island would look like. And it's a pretty wide section. This shows the widening into the businesses, how much wider you'd have to make it. You've got a median with a left turn slot, allow people to go back. It's a lot of real estate to build something like that with the developments already here. And doing something like that only addresses crashes at the driveway. Forty percent of the crashes along the corridor we reviewed are at driveways. 60% are at the intersections, existing traffic signals. Putting in a median alone only helps with crashes at the commercial driveways. It will not help with crashes currently occurring at the signals. Which really leads us into what we've been talking about for the past year and a half, and that's roundabouts. And it's a raised median with roundabouts. The raised median will help with the 40% of the crashes in the corridor we've been looking at. In the other location where we installed the median, we found a 78% reduction in total turning crashes at the driveway, 95% reduction in injuries, just by installing the median so people can't make left turns in and out across two, three, four lanes of traffic. Where the existing traffic signals are, replace them with roundabouts. In other locations that we've installed roundabouts, we found a 78% reduction in severe crashes and a 48% reduction in total crashes. So the roundabout concept, in addition to the raised median, really addresses what's needed on the Route 82 corridor project for access management to help out with crashes at the driveways, and it helps out with crashes that are occurring at the existing signalized intersections. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Jordan Pike. He'll give you a little more information on the roundabout concept.
Thanks, Scott. I'm Jordan Pike. I'm a project engineer with DOT, and I'm leading the design team that is designing the roundabout corridor with raised medians. So here's the plan you may or may not have seen. We presented this back to the council in 2015. And what it is, is a raised median, as Scott described, throughout the corridor, with six roundabouts at the six major intersections. We're looking at breaking this into two phases for constructability. The eastern part of the project, which is closer to the center of town, we're doing what we're calling a road diet. And what that essentially is, is we're looking at holding pretty much the existing curb line. And today, there's four lanes of traffic going through there, two in each direction. We're looking at reducing that to one lane in each direction with the median in the middle. So the road isn't getting any wider there. It's a little more narrow, or just less lanes, really. And that's going to help slow speeds and improve safety, as well as give you better access, because the single lane roundabouts have better safety performance than a typical signalized intersection. So here's just kind of a blow-up of what I'm going to call Phase 1, which is that single lane in each direction section with the single lane roundabouts. So why single lane roundabouts, and how are they going to fix the 60% of the accidents occurring at the intersections? Well, national studies done by Federal Highways shows that we're seeing almost a 40% reduction in all crashes at single lane roundabouts. And that's compared to intersections that were previously either traffic signals or always stops. Even better than that is, as Scott had pointed out earlier on his crash experience that we're seeing in the corridor, a lot of those accidents are angle crashes. And when you have an angle crash, the high angle and high speed are what really makes crash severity very dangerous. So the fact that we get almost a 40% reduction in all the crashes, and then almost an 80% reduction in the injury crashes, really helps resolve some of the safety issues we're experiencing in this corridor. Like Scott pointed out earlier, there's almost seven locations on our high-crash-location study sites throughout the state. Even better than that, 80% reduction in injury crashes is a 90% reduction in fatal crashes. And the reason why roundabouts are seeing these statistics is because with the raised curbing and some of the design features built into a roundabout, the ability that you need to yield on entry, the circulating traffic has it right of way. You get slower, more controlled speeds, it's easier to find a gap in traffic to enter the roundabout. You know, you only need to look for one, a gap in one lane of traffic, as opposed to three in two directions, like you are seeing out here today. So just a slower, more predictable type of intersection that has a great safety record throughout the country.
I have a question. What would be the average speed going through the roundabout? Do you have a, because there is...
For single lane roundabouts, you asked what was the average speed. Typically, for a single lane, you would see speeds between 15 miles an hour and 20 miles an hour. And for a two or more lane roundabout, you would see 20 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. So, pretty slow compared to, I think, the 85th percentile speed. Although the road is posted at 35 miles per hour, we're seeing closer to 45 miles per hour as an operating speed out here.
Excuse me. In lieu of that, what would be the posted speed in the single lane section?
The posted speed would, I would assume would be the same, but we would have to have our state traffic administration make a judgment on that if the speed should change.
Years ago, when it was two-lane road, it was 25. The State Traffic Commission increased it to 35, even though they knew and had testified at that time that the average speed limit then was 11 miles over the posted speed limit. And the bottom line, the result was, after it was increased, that 11-mile average increase over the posted speed limit was still constant. Just for food for thought.
Yeah. We can touch on that later, but there's a lot of studies out there nationally that show misrepresenting the speed limit is actually more dangerous. So we have a raised median separating the, what we're reducing with the road diet here, four lanes, two in each direction, to a single lane in each direction. And that's going to help reduce speeds. Again, when you have raised curbing and stuff like that, drivers tend to behave differently. And one of the behavior changes we see are reduced speeds. Like I mentioned before, roundabouts operate a little differently. They're not the rotaries we had up in the northeast corner of this part of the country back in the day. You yield on the entry. So the traffic circulating in the roundabout has it right of way. And that makes it easier so the roundabout clears, it doesn't get locked up. And like I said, especially with the single lanes, you're only judging one lane of traffic, and it's a lot easier to find a gap than out here on the corridor entering and exiting these driveways. And this is the road diet. And again, it's going to pretty much be within the existing curb line because we're reducing those lanes. Here's what we're calling Phase 2. And this is a little further west. You have New London Turnpike over here, and this is the Plaza with Shop Right and the new Mo's and Verizon store. And again, these are the old conceptual drawings back from 2015. We've been further developing these, as I'll touch on later, but this is just for diagrammatic purposes. Again, we're reducing the speeds and reducing the congestion in this area. There is four lanes in this section here, so we'll need a little bit of widening to include that raised median. But overall, you'll still see the reduction in speeds because of the raised curbing on both sides. The roundabouts help with the attitude that you don't need to beat the light, you know, observing traffic out here. You see a lot of the signals. Since there's no turning lane, people are either trying to get into the driveways during the clearance interval of the traffic signal, so when it's yellow or red. Or, you know, trying to get through when it's turning yellow or red, because they're not able to find a gap during the green time. The driveways with the raised median will become right in, right out, which will eliminate those left turns and those angle crashes that are associated with high severity. No left turns at a roundabout. You make a right, and you go in a counterclockwise direction, and you exit when you get to your destination. And then also, there's an opportunity for aesthetic enhancement at the landscape's green area in the center of the roundabout there. And, you know, these are just some sketches that our landscape architect put together, but, you know, there's some opportunity for some plantings and stuff in the middle. Other roundabouts we've done have been customized for that town, you know, plantings that are specific to that area or such. Here's just like another rendering of something you could do, something with a rose, plantings that look nice.
Excuse me. Could you go back to Phase 2 and just verify for me or explain to me the areas that are in the sort of orange red, that's for the widening of the road?
This orange, this red line on the outside?
Yes.
That is sidewalk. The actual widening in the road is kind of just shown on the aerial overlay here. But again, this is just, this was part of the concept drawing. So the, this is just like a diagrammatic sketch on a 2D aerial photo.
Okay. It's hard for me to conceptualize if these are just conceptual drawings. I need to see, you know, will you be explaining later on about widening the roads and taking property and what that will involve?
I'll be covering that in our next steps.
Okay, thank you.
So again, there's some opportunity for aesthetic enhancements here. Personalized areas, and that looks nice, gateway-type treatments, if you will. So wide-motored roundabout versus what we call a traffic circle or rotary, stuff we've kind of already pointed out. The differences are that the drivers yield on entry. The circle's much smaller. You can see on the picture on the right, this is a rather large rotary in the New England area. The smaller size really helps with the reduced speeds. It's much, you know, you have to slow down and navigate the tighter curves as opposed to a big, wide curve. They're associated with less congestion, fewer and less severe crashes. Again, by reducing the speeds and eliminating the high-angle crashes, we have a very good safety record with roundabouts in the country. There's no weaving or lane changing. You stay in your lane, just as you would at a traffic signal. And roundabouts are growing in popularity very fast. We already have over 3,000 in the United States. So here's another example of a roundabout on Route 82, just up the road in Salem. This was a location where we had a lot of crashes prior to installation, about 24 a year with nine injuries. Post-construction, after building the roundabout, we saw that go down to six crashes and less than an injury a year. That's a 75% reduction in crashes, total crashes, and a 93% reduction in injury crashes. So, I mean, if you could do that here, that would be a great safety success, especially with all the high-accent locations, as we've seen pointed out earlier in the presentation. Another bonus at this location, if you will, is there was a lot of concern with congestion and beach traffic in the summer, and a lot of that congestion is nothing what it was before the project went through.
Question. Excuse me, question. Compared to the Salem Four Corners and our Phase 2, I would imagine that you've looked at the traffic counts. What's the difference in the traffic count?
I don't have that data offhand, but I think they're, I would assume they're fairly similar.
I'm Wilbert, now I'm principal engineer at DOT. The Phase 2 section that you asked about, I think those volumes are probably a little higher than Salem. The Phase 1 volumes are probably, I would say, maybe perhaps even a little lower than Salem. There's a pretty significant drop-off between those two phases. Is that your question?
Yeah, it leads me to another question, but I'll wait till, I want to give you the courtesy to let you finish the presentation.
Okay, thank you. So, like I've been mentioning, there's been a lot of success nationally, and also we've had success locally with solving safety issues at other locations throughout the state. And this was one, a national award we received recently for a location in Killingworth, which was a rotary, one of the old rotaries that we converted to a modern roundabout, where even though it was a circular intersection already, just the conversion to the modern roundabout, you know, slightly smaller size, improved geometry, was a big success in reducing some of the crashes we were experiencing at that intersection. Okay, so what have we been doing for the last couple of years? So we met back out, and Will gave a presentation back in September of 2015. Since then, we've ordered ground survey to get a digital 3D mapping of the area so we can go into further design details at the locations to improve upon that 2D aerial design I just showed. We ordered traffic volumes, so we counted the traffic in the area, and also got the turning maneuvers in and out of the driveways. We've been looking at more detailed designs, you know, actually laying out how trucks would turn, maneuver in these things, different locations for the circles, and how that affects traffic. Along with those detailed designs, we've been doing more of an in-depth capacity analysis and traffic modeling of the corridor. And we've also been reaching out to stakeholders to try to discuss impacts or work with them on any changes to their property. So part of that stakeholder coordination, I'm just going to cover a couple of them quickly, because we've had a lot of requests from businesses in the area. We've met with Cumberland Farms and provided them a concept plan. They were looking to convert a gas station there. We've met with the Shop Right Plaza people a couple of times to help look into, they're rebuilding this Mo's and Verizon here. So we sat down with their site plan and art site plan and looked at ways to mitigate impacts between each other. We've talked to this gentleman here, who unfortunately this building has burned down, but he's looking at rebuilding, so we've been in contact with him, providing a site layout, and trying to let him know what we're thinking about as far as widening and other impacts. Hendles has reached out to us to try to get an idea of impacts on their property and how that affects petroleum deliveries. For Phase 1, this is the eastern part of the project. We've had some stakeholder meetings with city officials to discuss access on Crane Avenue. It's currently a private road. We're just looking for ideas here on ways to maintain this roundabout and access these driveways. So an idea that was thrown out was maybe making this something that's owned and maintained by the city. We're still investigating options there to make that work. We've spoken with Chelsea Groton Bank a few times. They also showed up at a recent stakeholder meeting with Old Times Restaurant. We've met with Old Times to talk about impacts to his property with parking on the side of his lot adjacent to Mount Pleasant, as well as some of his trash collection details and how his property is impacted with the construction of the roundabout there. And then we've also had coordination with the owner of the Sign Professional shop at the corner of Asylum and Route 82. So what are the next steps? Well, we're looking at initiating the project and moving forward. We're going to continue the design process. So someone asked about the 2D aerial photos we were looking at before. We need to further lay out the design with the 3D surveying that we've received recently, and we have been, but that's kind of an iterative process, as, you know, we're looking at how different designs affect different properties differently. And as we develop a design, we start to look at, okay, how could we build this, and how does the building affect the property even more? Or, you know, how does the construction tie in with the design? And then once we think we have a good handle on the, a design idea and how to build it, then the third piece comes in, in meeting with the stakeholders or the Public Works Subcommittee, and kind of getting feedback on, okay, how does, this is our design, what do you think? How does this impact you? How does this impact the way you use your business? And this isn't kind of a one-shot deal. This kind of goes around and around until we find a solution that fits well for the project. So it's a lot of, you know, going one way, you get some new information, and then we bring it back in shop, make some tweaks, and it's a continuing working process till we have something we think is good and most people would agree or are happy with. Once we do that throughout the corridor, there's going to be a lot of meetings with stakeholders and business owners to get to this point. But once we do, we would hold a public informational meeting at 30% design. That would be at a point where we feel like we have a concept plan that's much better than those 2D aerial ones I showed before, and works in three dimensions, as well as outlines the impacts to properties along the corridor. If all went well at that public informational meeting and we were still moving forward the progress, project, we would then go into the part where we start to acquire property and our environmental permits. We'd get into more detailed design, like drainage and other things like that. And if all goes well, we were looking at starting construction in 2023 for the Phase 1, which is the road diet section, and 2025, which is Phase 2, the four-lane section. All right. You know, just to reiterate a little bit on why we're promoting this project is, like Scott had mentioned before, you know, you've got 40% of the crashes out here occurring at driveways. And the only way to really fix that is with a raised median as part of access. And the other 60% occurring at intersections, like you saw the data for New London Turnpike, traffic signals aren't going to solve those crashes. So for the other 60%, roundabouts are really a good fix to help the safety problems occurring at the intersections, as well as help provide better traffic flow for the access management piece of it with the ability to make U-turns at the roundabouts. piece of it with the ability to make U-turns at the roundabouts. So I guess I'll open it up for discussion.
Alderwoman Gould.
I just have a couple of questions. You talked about crashes at intersections that are signalized. So I want to specifically ask about the signal at Mount Pleasant Street in West Maine and Osgood in West Maine, where there is a traffic signal there now. Why can't you put in a left-hand arrow, giving the people time? You showed that picture of the man trying to pull into CVS. Well, if he had a left turn arrow going either way into the, you have a left-hand arrow coming east, pulling into Willow Tree Plaza, you could do the same thing for the CVS heading west, turning up Mount Pleasant Street. So maybe that's more of a comment than a question, but you have it one way on West Main Street, pulling into Willow Tree Plaza, a left-hand turn, but you don't have it going the other way. I think that would be an easier fix than a roundabout necessarily.
So, so what you're suggesting, the left turn lane with the left arrow?
No, not a left, not a left lane, just like you have it now.
Just the left arrow?
Just the left arrow.
The, the issue with that is it doesn't theoretically remove that conflict. So you still have the ability for someone to run a red light and, and strike somebody making that, that left turn movement. Whereas with a roundabout, there are no more high-angle maneuvers. Everyone turns in the same direction, and the accidents you see that occur are all either merging or diverging. There's no more high-angle, high-speed crashes. And you also didn't solve the, the speed problem. You know, you're still going to have people trying to beat the lane.
You have the arrow in both directions. If you only have left turns.
Oh, yeah, you could also only have the one, the advance in one direction, so.
Through traffic can go straight in the left lane in both directions, so you cannot allow left turns to be moving at the same time in both directions, because the cars could also be going straight in that lane.
Right, so you, but you do have the ability to change those lights, right? You could just.
No, no, because not without building a left turn lane. In other words, you can, with a four-lane cross-section, you can give an arrow in one direction or the other, but you cannot do it in both directions at the same time, which I think is what you're suggesting.
Without a left turn lane?
Without a left turn lane. If you have a left turn lane in both directions, like at Newland and Turnpike, for example, where we have a left turn, yeah, we have left turn lanes in both directions.
They both turn left there.
Because you have left turn lanes there, right? That's what you would have to do. You'd have to have the left turn lane.
Okay. My next question. In the area of the single-lane roundabouts, you're talking about some of the roundabouts will be single-lane and some will be double-lane. How do emergency vehicles get through those single-lane areas? If you have one lane of traffic, and I'm going to tell you right now, being a member of a fire department, traffic doesn't know where to go. You've got now one lane. Where are those, you want those trucks to go over the curbs, the ambulances, police cars, fire trucks, all over that median to get around traffic in those single-lane areas?
So although I said it's a single lane, it's a little wider than your typical single, single lane. So if I say, like, out on the road here now, the, the lane itself is probably 11 to 12 feet. The single lanes we're going to have out here are going to be a little wider, and you also have wider shoulders. So you really have closer to a 17 to 18-foot cross-section, which does allow for, you know, two vehicles to kind of bypass each other. And what we've done in other towns as well, for instance, Ellington, Salem, and also just recently Monroe, we're in construction right now, all roundabouts, well, at least Ellington and Monroe, immediately adjacent to the fire department. So the fire department had a lot of concerns, and after working with them, we designed the curbing, so you have that, so it's mountable on the splitter island side. So now you have a 17 to 18-foot wide section, which is kind of good enough for bypass already, but we also made the curbing mountable on the inside, so if the fire truck, if someone doesn't pull all the way over, he can still mount the curbing to get around. And we've actually had, was it Ellington, the fire chief write in? Or was that? Yeah, we had, so after, this chief who kind of was almost, almost an opponent of the project initially, had a lot of concerns with the safety, actually wrote in a letter to us as testimony and offered as a contact to other police chiefs, or fire chiefs who had concerns.
And when you say mounted, when you say mounted curb, that, that's the, the sleek.
It's, it's a little bit of a bump, but for them and a fire truck, it's, it's mountable.
The other thing I wanted to mention too, the, the single-lane roundabouts, it's a little hard to see in this graphic, but if you look at the green dot in the middle, that's, that's grass, that's landscaping. But then around the outside of that, that orange strip that you see, that's what we call a truck apron. And it's, it's concrete, so it, it looks a little different than the asphalt, and it's, it's raised up about an inch, inch and a half above the pavement. But in a, in a fix, when the emergency, if there is an emergency in, in the, or crash in the roundabout, emergency vehicles can ride up on that truck apron to get around. And that, that truck apron is usually in the vicinity of about 14 to maybe 16 feet, something like that. So that gives them plenty of room to get around between the, between the paved portion and then the concrete portion.
Alderwoman Gould, you still have a floor.
I have, thank you. How do pedestrians cross the street?
So there's crosswalks located on all of the legs. Again, it's a little hard to see in this graphic here, but there's a median, on Route 82, there's the full median, but on the side streets, there's what we call the splitter islands, which is kind of a smaller median, if you will. And those serve as pedestrian refuge areas. So a pedestrian is, comes up to the, pedestrian comes up to the, where's the pointer? Yeah, so let's say a pedestrian wants to cross here, for example. He'll wait here. When there's a gap in traffic, he can cross over to the median, and the median is wide enough there for what we call that pedestrian refuge, so he can stand out there, wait for a gap in the other direction, and then cross. Now technically, he does have the right of way, so if he wants to step out into the road, the cars are supposed to stop for him. Don't really recommend that, but, you know, in most cases, you can wait for a gap in traffic, and it's actually much quicker to do that than it is to press a button, wait for a walk signal to come on, and then cross. And if you're trying to cross, if you, if you were trying to cross this road, for example, today, in the middle, in between signals, which we do see people do, you're trying to find a gap in traffic in both directions at the same time. With a roundabout, you don't have to do that. You only, you're only crossing one direction at a time. It makes it a lot safer and a lot quicker to get across the, the road than it is when you're trying to cross, you know, all four lanes at one time. And I will mention that roundabouts, as compared to signals, about 40% fewer crashes, pedestrian crashes. And up until about a month ago, there had never been a pedestrian fatality at a roundabout in over 30 years of roundabouts in this country, thousands of roundabouts. Now compare that to signals, there are three pedestrians killed at signals every day in this country. So the, the pedestrian safety record for roundabouts versus signals is just, is out of the world. It really is.
Okay, and my last question. Originally, you had talked about, maybe a year ago, that if you were heading east into town, after asylum and the West Main Street intersection, that you were going to reduce those four lanes of tra, well, either east or west, after McCann, after asylum and West Main Street. So heading into the city or out of the city, you were going to reduce those four lanes of traffic. You have two lanes now coming east or west in that area. Are you still talking about reducing that to one lane?
Yes, that was the road diet area that Jordan spoke of. It starts, I think, at Maple Street, if I'm not mistaken, and goes to roughly Asylum So that, that section would be one lane in each direction.
From Maple Street?
Right.
Yep.
Is that tracks? Is that right?
I should be talking about, maybe as I was going down. Oh, no.
Oh, between asylum and downtown?
Mm-hmm, yes.
No, our project would stop in asylum.
Okay, so, but at one time, you, we were talking about reducing that area. So you're no longer talking about reducing that area from asylum.
East of asylum?
From asylum street into downtown.
I don't, I don't believe we were talking about that word. Was that part of your proposal, right?
That was what was proposed during the, as a potential option from the Road Safety Act, we did it in 2016 as a potential future project, and was going to be reviewed by the grant that we applied for, but we did not get a reason. So that's not even really on the table at this.
Okay, so.
Future, it's a bad.
So the road reduction from two lanes to one lane would be from?
Goes from Maple to asylum.
From asylum street to Maple Street?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman Philbrook.
Thank you. I have, I'm going to start with a, a statement, and please, it's not meant as disrespectful, but as a factual thing. Was it or was it not the Connecticut Department of Transportation who designed and constructed Route 82 to begin with?
I would imagine it is.
Okay, so why should we consider two bites of the apple?
Well, I'll be honest with you, when Route 82 was designed, I don't know that any of us were, were around at that time. But I will say that generally speaking, throughout, not, I'm not specific on Route 82 or even Norwich, is, you know, we've learned a lot over the last, I'd say, 50 years. You know, back in the day, things were designed very differently. They were designed very, it was very auto-centric mode. You know, we, we focused on cars. We really didn't think that much about pedestrians or bicyclists. And that's just the way roads were designed, and, and we were really still in the infancy of, of designing roadway networks. You know, we've, we've, we've taken back from that, a lot of input from the public that that's not what they want. They want to see a more pedestrian-friendly, more non-motorized-friendly type of environment. That's one of the things that roundabouts do provide, and particularly in the road diet area. That was one of the, that's one of the main reasons, actually, that we're talking about in road diet, is to try to make that area pedestrian-friendly. You know, in addition to that, I will say that even from a very specific design features, one of the things that some of the people have spoken to us about here is the driveway aprons are very steep, and you get cars bottoming out on them. So that's something that we can take back. Now, that's something that was frankly done years ago. We had certain design standards for driveway aprons, and it worked for certain dimensions, I will say. It doesn't work in certain dimensions. And again, these are all just things that we've learned over the years. I think what I would ask is that you judge us on our current accomplishments. Salem, for example, is, is a very successful project, as I think Scott was mentioning. Our, our crash reductions out there exceed even the national average, you know? In fact, all of our roundabouts have actually exceeded the national average. So particularly from a safety point of view, we have, we have really exceeded those expectations. From a congestion point of view, we've done even better than that, but that's not frankly our goal. Our goal is safety.
And I have a couple more. So my next question, you alluded to some of the things farther down the road that caused me concern, property acquisitions. Will you be taking these properties by eminent domain? And what will the cost to the city be in lost tax revenue? And what will be the impact and disruption to existing businesses? I know all these issues were addressed at previous hearings, and I noticed in your dissertation about contacting business, that I saw no mention of the East Great Plains Fire Department, which is a major player in this whole situation. And the business, not Cumberland Farms across the street, because I'm not sure there's a Cumberland Farms that's going to be there, but the liquor store and the pizza place. So I think it's vitally important that we know what your plan is, and how are we going to, if we are, going to compensate these businesses for lost time? And then the last is, who will maintain all these grass? I mean, these are lovely drawings, but with all due respect, this is Norwich. This is not West Hartford or Simsbury, you know? To have Norwich, I assume you are thinking of something like Cape Cod, where you have the greenery and, and the rose, that's, that's all. I'm glad that the state of Connecticut has money for that kind of stuff, but I don't think the city of Norwich does. So who will maintain these grassy areas?
All right, well, let me start from the back. So as far as the maintenance of, of the, of the islands goes, then that would be, we would work that out with the city, but generally speaking, the state doesn't really have the resources to maintain anything. So the islands that you see here down the middle of the road, at this point, we're considering those to be some sort of a hardscape, whether it's, you know, stamped concrete or something like that. I don't believe there's any plantings proposed for that. Within the center of the roundabout, we haven't really gotten that far yet with, with speaking with the, speaking with Ryan or his staff about, about that. But if, if that's something that the city is willing to maintain, we can put in plantings. If not, well, we, we honestly can't maintain it ourselves, so we would come up with something that would require no maintenance there.
Well then, if I just may interject, if, if the state of Connecticut doesn't have the money to maintain them, I can assure you that the city of Norwich doesn't either. So I would be curious to know what your alternatives are.
We would go to a hardscape type of design.
If I can just add for a second, I, I wanted to make it clear, when we were talking about the next steps of the project, and Jordan had mentioned more stakeholder coordination, more coordination with Ryan's group, eventually getting to 30% design, we're not even at 30% design. We're coming here today, we're probably 5% is all we're at. We have a long ways to go. If you saw Phase One, we're not looking to start construction until 2023. That's five years. And we're here to help. We're here to work with your community, we're here to work with your council, we're open to ideas, we'd like this to be a partnership. And we're just at the very, very preliminary stages now, just starting. A lot of the businesses you mentioned, we haven't gotten to them yet, because we're just not there in the design yet. We're only about 5%. We've got a long ways to go. And as far as the landscaping and the, the hardscape-type treatments, I mean, those are all things that we would sit down with your, your Public Works Commission, we would discuss them, I'm sure they would go through the mayor's office for, for comment, something we work together on, something that's mutually agreeable. What was shown here tonight was just some ideas. Nothing's been decided on. We've got another 95% of design effort to go to get there.
Okay, but I think it's important that for us to make educated decisions, I personally need to know these, as much of this information upfront. So my last statement will be that I would feel, as Alderwoman Gould alluded to, and former Alderman Martin brought it up too, why are we not considering a change in the traffic light configuration and the timing just to try it? I know myself, when I go down that road, that if I'm going to be making a left hand, let's say I'm in front of All Times Restaurant and I want to make a left-hand turn, if I blink, that light has changed. So it just seems to me that this would be, if we could have an educational process, and disrespect again to the chief, but a, a greater enforcement of the traffic, if everybody, if this posted speed limit is X and everybody's going Y, then maybe we need to look at that.
There's, there's not a lot we can do with the traffic signals, I'll be honest with you. Without, without putting in, especially without putting in left turn lanes, there's really nothing. You're talking about perhaps some minor timing changes, but nothing that's really going to address the kind of crash problems that we have out here. These are not minor problems. These are humongous crash problems out here. Timing changes aren't going to cut it. You know, we need some very serious changes out here to this road to make that, to make it work. You know, and this, and you're really only talking about the traffic signals, that's only, what'd you say, 60, 60% of the crashes are at the signals? The other 40%, which is really, you know, in this case, that's really where you see the difference between this road and most other roads, is all the driveways. We just, we have an access management problem out here. There's really no way to, to get around that. So that's where the median comes in. That addresses a big portion of the, of the crash problems out here. And then the roundabouts versus the traffic signals would, would address. problems out here. And then the roundabouts versus the traffic signals would address the rest. And I did want to speak to one point you asked about the Great Plains Fire Department. We did meet with the, and I've forgotten the name of the council or the committee, it was the, was it Emergency?
Public Safety.
Public Safety, yeah. We met with them, and they were at that meeting, and we did talk to them. This was, this is going back some time now, but they were part of that discussion.
All right, thank you.
Alden and Delicia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing I'd like to say is that the thing that we can't quantify here is the impact to the businesses on this road that they are experiencing because of the traffic pattern that we currently have. I live in this area. I feel like I take my life in my hands when I go through the Four Corners at EGP Firehouse. Every single time I make a left-hand turn from New London Turnpike onto West Main Street headed east, at least one, if not two, cars blows the light while I've got the green left-turn arrow. So I don't believe that left-turn arrows and left-turn lanes are part of the solution. And there's not enough man-hours in the Patrol Division and the Police Department to babysit that, just that one intersection, never mind the other five that were, are so problematic. So we do have to do something different. Something seriously needs to change here. I can also say from experience, I have been rear-ended right near where Phase Two is going to happen. And again, that was because of the volume of traffic and the fact that people were trying to make lefts and rights coming in and out of Wendy's, no offense to Wendy's, but that's the case. And I was stopped in traffic and was rear-ended by somebody who wasn't paying attention. So obviously, I understand completely the safety concerns that you're trying to address. However, the first thing that caught my attention was that the intersection where you want to put the roundabout at Dunham Street, I know that you said that you're only about five percent designed, and there's a lot of issues that need to come up. However, Colonial Car Wash is going to dump into that roundabout. The gas station is going to dump into that roundabout. Your own example, Bank America, is within a handful of feet from that roundabout. I'm concerned that that's going to be too much to solve with just a roundabout. And I think that we have other instances or other areas like that, that you're going to need to consider. And as this evolves, I'll be interested to see what your solutions are to that. Same, I see the same issue at that intersection I just mentioned, which is West Main Street and Norman Road, where Moses is right now, because you have people not only exiting from Wendy's, but you also will have the entrance into Wendy's parking lot right in the top of the roundabout. So you'll have people slowing down to nearly a stop to make that right-hand turn right in the roundabout. So again, I'm seeing problems with the idea. And I'm hopeful that the solutions will be forthcoming. One of the, one of the other things that caught my attention was that you want to reduce traffic from two lanes along Asylum Street as you, I'm sorry, on West Main Street as you approach Asylum Street, heading westbound, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so as you come, as you travel up an incline and burn, and bend left, we're going to shrink from two to one. And then on the other end, coming...
No, no, if I, I think I, I think I bothered your question. If you're heading west...
Yes.
So there's, there's two lanes on 82.
Yes.
There will, there will be two lanes coming into the roundabout. One, I think, becomes a right-turn lane, and the other goes straight through. So the reduction doesn't actually occur until after that roundabout?
So you, if you're in the right lane approaching that first roundabout at Asylum, the right-hand lane of the roundabout would be right turn onto Asylum?
Am I correct on that?
Hmm.
Yeah, I think that's...
We're looking at the...
Yeah, actually, that one...
I understand it's preliminary. I'm just trying to picture it in my head.
Well, that's actually one of the things that we're looking at right now. But that's the idea. We wouldn't, we wouldn't drop it down to two lanes before the roundabout.
So the same could be said at Osgood, then, where, where you're coming in the opposite direction, you're coming eastbound, two lanes as you approach from Maple Street, westbound, where Chelsea Groton Savings Bank is on the right?
Yeah, so...
So this is Osgood right here. So...
Yep.
It's single lane in each direction.
Okay, it's already one lane in each direction at this point.
And so to the left of your slide, back towards Maple Street, that's where it's going to reduce from two lanes to one?
Yeah, we're looking at the best location for that, but right now, somewhere around Dunkin' Donuts, like they have, they have some queuing problems in the morning, where, you know, it spills back on 82. So we don't want to reduce the width before their driveway to, you know, to not make things there worse. Where, where that point actually is, we just have to finally nail it down, but it's somewhere around just after Dunkin' Donuts, we're thinking, as we approach Maple.
That's actually the, I think that's the biggest spacing we have between roundabouts on the project. So it was a good spot to, to break it down to two, from, from four lanes to two lanes at that point.
Yeah, because there's, there's not a lot of linear distance between the exit to Dunkin' Donuts and Maple Street. And again, you are approaching on an incline, bending to the left. So essentially, it's blind until you get to the top of the hill. So again, cause, a little bit of cause for concern. I'm also concerned about the capacity of the one-lane roundabouts. Because if, once they're, once they're full with cars, there's no getting, there's no gap to execute. You know, once you've reached the capacity, and it just seems to me this, this small radius roundabout is going to reach capacity pretty quickly.
So that's one of the things that we take a really good look at with our traffic volumes. And we had looked at this previously when we came here and presented. And as Jordan mentioned, we've gotten some new traffic volumes now, and we're taking a look at it again. But one of the things that you kind of have to keep in mind is, roundabouts are a lot more efficient at processing traffic than traffic signals are. So if you look at the traffic volumes in that area, the volumes themselves don't require four lanes. The reason that there's four lanes out there now is because of traffic signals. They're, they're just not efficient, you know? When you replace those signals with a roundabout, now you can get back down to a two-lane road again. You know, there is a pretty significant drop-off right around that point where, it's right around, actually, is it, I think it's right around Dunham Street, there's a pretty good drop-off there. Going east of that, you know, the volumes are actually low enough that you can get away with a one lane in each direction. Now, there's probably going to be some left-turn lanes at the, at the roundabouts, too. But, but if, if we can get away with it, if it works, then that's a nice improvement, because a two-lane road is much safer than a four-lane road. Any, any two-lane road is safer than a four-lane road. You just have less conflicts, less, you know, less things going on, that sort of thing. So if you can get away with it, we always want to go back down to a two-lane road. Road diets themselves are actually what we call proven safety countermeasure, meaning the Federal Highway Administration tells, we don't even have to make, we don't even have to prove that it's going to be safer, because they've, they've been proven themselves to be safe. One of the other proven safety countermeasures happens to be medians and roundabouts. So we're, in this case, we're actually employing three out of the, I think it's seven, that the Federal Highway Administration has deemed to be proven safety countermeasures. We actually have three of them here. So, but in answer to your question, you know, one, one-lane roundabouts are going to, not going to have the capacity of a two-lane roundabout, obviously, but they're also safer. So if we can get away with it, we definitely want to do that. In this case, you know, we've done a lot of simulations, we've done a lot of analysis. It does look like it's going to work. You know, PM peak hours in twenty years from now, you may see some congestion, but even that's going to be less than what you're seeing out there today. It's actually, it's pretty impressive when you see how well they operate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alden and Bronny.
I'll try to keep my questions short and simple. How many months did it take to do the Salem Turnpike bout, and was that amount of time typical?
I think it was about a year in construction. A lot of that was utility relocations that had started previous to the actual roadway construction. But that, that one site was one construction season to complete the bulk of the roadway work. And yes, that was, that's pretty typical for what we've been seeing.
That job also, we had a, the driveway up to the meat market, we had, we had some driveway changes at a gas station and the meat store up on the hill. That took us a little, maybe a little bit of extra time. But yeah, it's about...
Second question, how many properties, as in buildings, will you need to obtain? And does that include the East Great Plains Firehouse?
We don't know how many we're going to have to obtain. That's part of our process at this point. We're not going to take the firehouse. But we do have to look and see, you know, which, we know there are going to be some. And it's, it's a question of what side are we going to work on? You know, which buildings do we have to take? Sometimes it works out where if, once you take a building, it allows you to maybe do more widening on that side and save some of the buildings on the other side. You know, these are all things I honestly can't answer at this point. We got to get well, more into the design to be able to answer it. But there will be told.
Yeah. Next question. We've, this is similar to the 2015 plan, six roundabouts. Is there any way you would consider reducing it to, say, one to two roundabouts?
I'd love to. The downside of that is, the roundabouts are where people will turn around and make U-turns. So if I cut it down to one, that means that you've got to go a lot farther in order to make a U-turn. So from a customer point of view, they're not going to like that, I'll be honest with you. But from my point of view, I'm happy to cut them down to as many as you want.
I should say before moving on that your idea of starting Phase One where you are is the one part which I do agree with. I don't want to be totally negative. Normally, I would, I don't know if I could do this, Peter, but I'd ask Chief Daley if he had any questions, or Ryan Thompson, or Deanna Rhodes, if they had any questions for the gentlemen, since they understand traffic a lot better than I do.
I will say we've been working with Ryan and the chief, so I, and certainly will continue to...
It seems to be very similar to the 2015 plan. It's actually the same, so we will start questioning with that.
Okay, thank you.
Alden and Bronny, please.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. All of the questions here are great and valid, and I know that you're considering all of these options, and you're so not near anywhere, you know, shovels in the ground. So I appreciate you coming out. First of all, as proof of concept, I work in Hartford, and there is a major roundabout in Hartford where highways dump off into, by the arch.
Oh, you're talking about Pulaski Circle?
I think so.
Or White, yeah, that's not a roundabout, actually.
It's not, there's a roundabout.
That's, it's a circle, but that's not a roundabout.
Well, anyway, it dumps, it dumps out, and it works very similarly, where the inner circle has the right-of-way, and the people entering it have to wait for a gal.
Except the people coming from the, coming underneath the library have the right-of-way?
I don't think, no, we're not talking about the same.
I'm sorry. What are you talking about?
I don't. Right in front of the State Comptroller's Office, Elm Street.
Yeah, that's...
That's it?
That's Pulaski Circle.
Oh, well, maybe it's not a roundabout, but proof of concept in terms of congestion and backups, it's, I've never seen an issue there. Also, if we're looking at opportunities, I think we see an opportunity for reduction in burden on our public safety complex. If they're responding to all of these accidents and injuries, they may be able to refocus their efforts elsewhere on other enforcement, such as some things that you have brought up. And I think that's a, that's a great opportunity. Also, with this, there may be an opportunity, not talking about maintenance, but in just terms of look and beautification, in terms of place-making, and in terms of how people see our city as they come in. And I think that's a potential opportunity. One question I did have was, in your stakeholder engagement, what, what was the response? Were people apprehensive, or was it just, just information sharing, or were they responsive to the issues?
Well, we've had, you know, several meetings, starting, I think, two or three years ago. We had a meeting with our, with the Chamber of Commerce, and some of the members from the Chamber, maybe fifty, seventy-five people, were right over here in Town Hall. And I would categorize that meeting as very much mostly positive, with a few people that were not in favor and, or had, had concerns. But the majority of those business owners were definitely in favor of it. We've since had other meetings, you know, some meetings in this room. And I guess I don't want to overstate it, but I would say the general consensus from the public so far, to me, has seemed to be generally on the positive side. Now, we do have some business owners that are definitely on the negative side as well. Jordan, perhaps you can speak about the actual individual meetings that we've had?
So far, I mean, we talked to some of the developers and their engineers that have been studying about the project. As far as working with businesses, it's probably been about 50/50 without being...
Yeah, I think an appropriate way at this point to categorize is, you had mentioned an exchange of information. And we're going out, we're asking questions about how they use a parking lot, how they use their business access. We're getting feedback, things that are important to them. And we're taking that back to the office and looking at how we can best accommodate them. So it's very early in the process. It's not that, you know, we have a design, and this is done, and this is how it's going to affect you. We're just not there yet. You know, we're trying to take what's important and make it consideration and make the design work for them. So it's just very early in our development of the design.
And have you done, like, pre and post evaluations of these businesses in other projects to see, you know?
I was actually just going to mention, there was a, there was a study done, it was, we didn't do it, but it was done nationally on roundabouts. And before roundabouts were installed, the, the ratio was about roughly seventy-five percent of the people being opposed to the roundabouts, and roughly twenty-five percent in favor. After the roundabouts were put in, that flip-flopped to about roughly two-thirds in favor, one-third opposed. Take that out about another year, and you're roughly about a seventy-five, twenty-five. So it's one of these things, you know, when you first, when people first hear about them, they think of the rotaries. It's natural. You know, you think of Cape Cod. You know, I live in Manchester, and right next to Manchester was Vernon, and Vernon Circle was a horrible old rotary. Everybody was happy when they got rid of it. So, you know, I'll be honest, when people first started talking about roundabouts, I wasn't exactly thrilled about these things, until I learned more about them and realized the difference between them and rotaries, and start to understand the real benefits of them. And what we have found is, after we've put these things in, we see probably a pretty, we haven't done studies, so I can't quote actual numbers, but it would be probably in that same vicinity. You know, we did one in Ellington, where we had a meeting before the, at roughly thirty percent. And, geez, I don't know, were there two hundred people at this meeting, I think? And it was, it was, it was definitely more opposed than in favor. But, and I couldn't tell you exactly the numbers, but, you know, if you told me two-thirds, one-third, that's probably ballpark. After you put, after we put this in, and you had to understand, this was a five-legged intersection that had traffic backed up literally as far as the eye could see on all five legs. It was absolutely horrible. It was a nightmare. We put it in, and actually, during construction, we actually went into roundabout mode on July 4th weekend, believe it or not. And on dirt, during construction, as soon as we went into roundabout mode, the congestion all went away. And there was literally no backups. Now, I guarantee you, you cannot go into Ellington and find anybody that's opposed to that roundabout. A good friend of mine lives on one of the roads, and he was going to give me all kinds of crap if, if it didn't work. But now he's one of the big roundabout proponents. So it does, I mean, not everybody's going to change their mind, and we understand that. But most people, after they're installed, yeah, most people definitely are, come out in favor of them.
We have seen some strong evidence in Connecticut. At the location we mentioned in Salem, on one side of Route 85, there's a plaza. It used to have a Chinese restaurant on one corner with a massage parlor up top. Well, those businesses were... restaurant on one corner with a massage parlor up top. Well, those businesses were relocated elsewhere in order to construct the project, but the strip plaza that was next to that, probably in the three years that we worked on the project, that frequently had three to four vacancies within the strip mall. After the roundabout was opened, it was improved. You know, Plum Tomato came in, Dunkin' Donuts came in, and that plaza's been full as far as business use since we built the project. On the other side of the street as well, that plaza up on the hill has been full. The gas station's doing very well. We had another one that we built about six, seven years ago in West Haven, and on one corner that had a small auto repair business with a small convenience store. And it wasn't doing very well. Like, it didn't have much parking. He was struggling. After we built the roundabout, he was able to lease the property to Cumberland Farms, who completely came in, built an entire new building, parking reconfiguration, new pumps, and it's a very vibrant business, clean, looks nice, and the restaurants on the other corners are doing very well, too.
Like I set you up for the spike, that was my next question. Have you seen any additional investment, reinvestment as a result that you can correlate, if not directly or indirectly, to the roundabout? So?
Yeah, Salem is probably one of our more successful in those terms. You know, West Haven was another one. Some of the other, we did one in Killingworth, which was actually a rotary that we converted to a roundabout. And there is a, like an inn right there, that lady was very concerned that we were going to put her out of business during construction, and we didn't. And she went on and thrived, and, you know, it was a struggling business. And then after the roundabout, or after the rotary was converted to a roundabout, my understanding is she started doing very well. But it's, and there are, you know, there's all sorts of stories across the country that we could relay, that we've seen a lot of success. It's.
We have one on Ellington, Route seventy-four to eighty-six, that we built about five years ago. That one had a gas station on one corner that we had to acquire a portion of their parking lot with the project. But after the project was built, that property owner came to DOT, he worked with us, looking for some assistance. We helped him out with some design drawings. And he moved forward and added a Dunkin' Donuts to his business, which is currently under construction. So, you know, he's actually seeing a peak.
A lot of times it gets down to, you just can't get to the business, you know, in the current situation, whether it's congestion, or accidents, or both. So when you go in and it, you know, you kind of fix the intersection, you kind of clean up the problems, well, now people can get to the business again. And that lot becomes, you know, more developable, and it becomes more valuable in that sense.
Thank you.
Alderman Gould.
Thought of a couple more things. Going back to crossing the street, somebody in a motorized wheelchair, bicyclist, at night, you're going to tell me that these people are going to be safer crossing the street at the mercy of somebody stopping in two roundabouts than with a button that they push with a light that says they get to cross the street at a big intersection?
That's what the statistics have shown, yes. They're showing roughly about a forty percent fewer crashes. Now, because of, in some of these roundabouts, we may choose to do a, what we call a hawk signal, which is a, it's basically a pedestrian signal. And particularly the ones where we have the two lanes on, which would be, I guess, phase two. We may choose to do that for exactly those reasons, but.
If there's no signal, no traffic signal there, how does the hawk light work if there's no signal and you push a button?
The hawk signal basically becomes like a traffic signal. It's a, I forget exactly what it looks like, but it comes, generally speaking, it's dark until you press the button. Once you press the button, it starts to flash, and then there's a point where the pedestrian, and then I think it goes to solid red, so the cars stop, and then the pedestrians can cross.
Okay. Comparing West Main Street and six roundabouts to one roundabout in Salem, and one roundabout in Vernon, Killingworth, is just a little bit disingenuous, I'm sorry to say. Route eighty-two is a major business corridor for Norwich, Connecticut. Willowtree Plaza, Marcus Plaza, Westgate Plaza, a huge investment by CVS. Have you done any studies anywhere, besides the fact that you're going to take away, some people are going to have to give up their property, how you get it, whether it's through eminent domain, you buy it from them, they're paying less taxes to the city? This project on West Main Street, phase one, phase two, is two years long. We, as the city of Norwich, can't afford to lose one business. Have you done any studies anywhere? And I don't want to, I'm not trying to be rude, I don't want to hear about Salem. That was one roundabout, and ninety percent of those businesses were there in one shape or form. Maybe it was best-eaten doughnuts before it became Dunkin' Donuts, but it was there long before the roundabout. So I've got six roundabouts coming. I've got a two-year project on my major business corridor. If I lose a business, who makes that up to the city of Norwich? If one of those businesses says, you know what, I can't afford to lose fifteen or twenty percent of my market share, and people are avoiding this area, they're going to go to that grocery store, or a different drugstore, or a different whatever store, liquor store, whatever, who's making that up to the city of Norwich? Because I haven't heard anything about the economic impact to the businesses along Route eighty-two.
Well, you know, we did talk about that for a minute, but I will say, there was a study done in Golden, Colorado, that is a very similar environment, and it was a very similar improvement, what they did out there, as compared to what we're showing here. And I'm sorry, I don't have the statistics off the top of my head, but they looked at the tax revenue, both before and after this project was built. And during this time period, every other area in Colorado basically went down because there was an economic problem. That particular area was the only area in the entire state that actually the sales tax revenues all went up. So it did show that, you know, again, when you fix a road, when you can get now to this road, and, you know, it had problems, you fix it, and you fix the problem, yeah, businesses will come in, and the people will go to those businesses. What am I looking at, Ryan? I can't read this, but it's, okay, here we go. Sales tax revenue increased by sixty percent.
By sixty?
Six-zero percent. And this is during a recession while other cities declined. It says, this quarter had eight roundabouts. Same type of businesses that we see here on Route eighty-two. And this, like I said, that was Golden, Colorado. That's probably the most famous one.
So this is Norwich, Connecticut?
There have been other studies in other states. One that I can think of was down in California. Have we done a study in Connecticut? No, we haven't done, we haven't put six roundabouts on a road in Connecticut. New York has done this. Actually, most states have done a roundabout corridor somewhere along the way. I can't say they've all been in commercial areas like this, but I do know, based on what I read, wherever they've been put in, they do tend to be very successful.
God, I hope you're right.
Just a second. I'm going to join in briefly. Alderman D'Alicia touched upon the change in traffic patterns, either leaving or entering this new system at Asylum Street. How are you going to stop the rush of cars coming up, for example? And I want to mention the paid fire service down at the hill as well, because they will be impacted by this. Vehicles coming up that hill, understand that as they go into this roundabout, you're either going to the right off Asylum Road, which I think makes sense, or you're going straight ahead. How do you slow them down as they enter that? Because the human habit is to speed up and be first, as it is also to leave that system. Now you're coming onto a two-lane road again. You're going to try and rush down through the city. I've seen redesigns of that whole area down to one lane both ways. Have you looked at that at all?
Again, you're talking east of Asylum?
East of Asylum, heading into the downtown, towards the marina.
That hasn't been part of our project at this point. We've always just ended the project at Asylum. Like I said, we talked to Ryan a little bit about some plans.
But aren't you required to know the impacts on a safety basis of what your design, how it impacts the next section of the road?
Yeah.
So you can't ignore that.
And there's also a point, you have to stop someplace, right? So if it makes sense to extend it, we can certainly look at that. You know, I don't recall seeing that there was a major need east of Asylum, particularly in terms of crashes. I think the safety problems were mostly from there going west. But we can certainly take a look at that. We can, there's, again, we're very, very early in the process. We can look at practically anything that you want us to look at.
Will your recommendations also perhaps include, since this slide's up here, you see those adjoining parking lots up above?
Yep.
I believe they're all owned by the same person now, same control, all of them. There could be differences off-road done, which in fact connect those parking lots, so you don't have as many needs for entry onto the road coming off those parking lots. Right now, they're all separate. You want to go to the next one, you come out, you come back on the road, you go back off again. Joining them somehow, some type of off-road system that connects them could also alleviate some of those needs. And I also want to know if you're looking at the elimination of intersections. For example, we've talked about maple, we've talked about the poor sightlines there. And again, Alderman D'Alicia talked about the proximity between that intersection and Dunkin' Donuts. It's like for me to that door. You might as well say it if you're in a car moving. Are you considering the closing of that, so that road does not intersect with maple and pine? And what would that do to the need of that roundabout?
We're looking at options for closing roads. I can't specifically speak to the one that you're describing, but, for example, is this Shukrain?
Yes.
Yeah, Crane was a.
It's a private road.
That's a road that we've talked about, what can we do with that?
Right.
You know, it's not a great, it's not a great situation now. But to the extent that we can consolidate driveways, absolutely. We'd love to consolidate driveways. But that does require cooperation of property owners. It's something we cannot force upon them. But if we can work with the two property owners, we have been successful, not Verdauken, but we have been successful with cooperative property owners in doing that. If we can work that out, that's absolutely, you know, that's a home run for everybody. I think you were talking about the one on the north side, though, if I'm not mistaken. That's all, one shopping center? Nope. Back to that picture, Jordan.
Oh, this shopping, is that the Blue Tree?
Yeah, that's Walgreens.
Yes.
And Surplus Unlimited.
Yep.
You didn't mean that.
All of those. From here, from Surplus Unlimited, Walgreens, down to Asylum Street, I believe, all those lots are now controlled by one entity. So it provides for other opportunities to minimize intersecting with that road.
Sure, sure. Yeah, if we could, and to the extent that, what do we have, six roundabouts? If we could knock that down to five, that would be great, too, you know. These are all discussions that we can certainly be having.
I sat in on one of the meetings with one of the owners, and he was very supportive. But he also said, it won't matter to me because I'll be closed. That was the first thing he said. So, I mean, the point has been made by others, but it is very true. The construction cycle is a detriment to business. So having traveled to Hartford for eighteen years and watched Route Two be rebuilt and repaved, I do recall a time when DOT, to their credit, did all of that in the evening, after the traffic had passed through during the night. And we talked about this at his place of business, it would, I think, behoove all of us to consider nighttime work, when the season allows it, obviously, and the weather permits it, because then you're not dealing with all of that traffic.
Yeah.
And you could escalate or move up your timetables probably because you won't be interrupted as often.
Night work is usually reserved for areas where we don't have a lot of residents, which I would say this, for the most part, does kind of fit that bill. It's certainly something we're going to consider, absolutely.
The residents do have other parallel means to get in and around.
It's more the noise.
Oh, I understand that.
If there's residents, you know, nearby that are going to hear the noise at night, they're going to complain. But for the most part, I don't think we have too many that we're too much about. But, so yeah, it's definitely going to be a consideration.
Alderman Browning, you hide your hand.
When you, in the original presentation, it refers to a phase one starting in 2023, and then a phase two in 2025. Am I safe in assuming that we're looking at a four-year project?
It's probably three to four years, yeah.
And the second question is, if you were to reduce the number of roundabouts, how much would that speed that project up?
Probably not, because it's really the construction of the road, you know, the median, and the roundabouts themselves aren't going to take, you know, saving one, for example, probably isn't going to save you that much time, maybe a month, something like that.
So even if you put in just, even if you just separated the road, Ray's Meriden, I believe you said, would that still take four years?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
The median, excuse me. The median, just going with the median and not roundabouts would take four years, or would that speed things up?
Well, if you're going to put in a meeting that you have to provide ways to get around, you know, make the U-turns, which is at the roundabouts, so you really can't do one without the other. But in answer to the question, you know, if we have fewer roundabouts, sure, it'll take us a little less time, but I think you're probably still looking at about that same roughly amount of time.
So you'd be working on multiple roundabouts at the same time?
Yeah, to some extent. You know, we're probably going to be starting from the east end and working our way west. So we'd generally be, you know, breaking the job up into, well, there's two projects, two halves to it anyway, but even in phase one, it's going to get broken up into segments. So we're not going to have the entire road, you know, being all constructed at the same time. But, so you'd probably, it'd be more like we'd be working at one roundabout, and then you build a median in between, and you make the next one, that sort of thing.
Alderman Philbrook.
Could you explain to me about the hawk signals again? So those would not be at a traffic?
So the hawk is basically just, it's a, the term is pedestrian hybrid beacon, something like that. And it's basically just a, it's effectively the same thing as a pedestrian signal, pedestrian-only signal. So what it does is, the pedestrian would come up, press the button. The signals themselves are dark. They're not on.
Are they overhead or on the side?
They're overhead.
Oh, they're overhead, okay.
Yeah. Usually, I would say, they're overhead. They could be on the side, but usually they're overhead. And they're dark until pedestrian comes on and activates the push button. And then they start to flash, I forget the exact sequence, but they start to flash, I think, yellow, and then they go to some sort of a red configuration. That's where the cars stop, and then the pedestrian can cross at that time.
I can tell you, as a woman with mobility issues, I take my life in my hands every time I try to cross with a conventional walk, do-not-walk sign. There's just not enough time. And you throw into that equation two lanes, four lanes, a learning curve, no pun intended, for the.
Well, they're, again.
Causes me concern.
They're, you know, it's a newer feature, so there would be some, you know, there would be a learning curve associated with them, but it's getting closer to a more traditional, you know, traffic signal type of an arrangement where, excuse me, where cars see a red light and they stop. And we've put a couple of them in, actually, we've put a couple in at some trail crossings. One in Cheshire, where was the other one? Oh, and we've done two in Stamford. You know, they work. It's not rocket science, frankly.
I'm sorry, it's not like?
It's not rocket science.
It's not rocket science?
Yeah. People will look at it, and they'll understand it, you know. The first time you go through it, it looks a little weird, but then after that, you'll figure it out.
Only takes one time for it not to work.
And would it stop the four lanes of traffic, or two lanes of traffic? How does that work? You get to go from one side of the street through, all the way across? that work? You get to go from one side of the street through, all the way across, basically? Or you're stopping somewhere in the middle and then having to?
No, I believe it, you'd go all the way across.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Just to summary, thank you, one, for coming down. People on the new council have been asking for an opportunity to ask questions, to see information, to share their concerns. Just for the record, the city's position adopted last year by that council was no roundabouts, and the biggest reason was the concern for lost business, lost jobs, ultimately lost tax base. This is a business corridor. Addressing those issues is paramount, as is the safety, as is working with our two fire departments and our police department. That's probably the most demanding, busiest area we have in the city. So, thank you for taking the time to come down here.
Thank you. Appreciate it.